Start this again, take two. I'd like to call this meeting order the Sebastopol Planning Commission meeting of January 23rd, 2024, and ask for a roll call, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Ottinger. Commissioner Burns?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Vice Chair Fritz?
Here.
And Chair Fernandez?
Here.
Thank you, we have a full commission tonight.
Okay, thank you. At this point, we ask for comments from the public on items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if anybody would like to make a comment, please step up to the mic and can make a comment. Items that are not on the tonight's agenda, thank you. Okay, I don't see any, so go ahead and close public comments for items not on the agenda. And moving on, statements of conflict of interest. Good there, that's item three, and move on to item number four, and we actually have five sets of minutes to approve, so hopefully this will be quick.
We've been trying to keep up since, or catch up since we hired Susie, so.
So thank you for getting all these. All right, we'll start out with the minutes of April 11th, 2023. Anybody have any changes, additions for that?
I knew that we approved the minutes of April 11th, 73.
Okay, I actually have one just comment change. At the very end, it said we adjourned for a five-minute break, but didn't really say when the meeting was actually, that we adjourned the meeting, so I don't know if that's important to have that on.
Yes, thank you, we'll get the actual time adjourned.
Okay. All right, we have motion for approval.
I'll second.
You have a second, any other discussion on this, or, okay? Call for the, call for the motion for the vote, please.
Commissioner Ottinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Burns? Abstain, is it?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Hanley?
Abstain.
Vice Chair Fritz?
Aye.
And Chair Fernandez?
Aye.
Thank you, those minutes are approved. And let me just record this, 3-0 with two abstentions of Commissioner Burns and Commissioner Hanley.
Okay, moving on to the minutes of July, let's see, July 11th? Yeah, July 11th, 2023, any additions or changes to that? Okay, don't see any, motion for approval? Motion?
I move we approve the minutes of July 11th, 2023.
I'll go ahead and second.
I second.
Okay, we have a second, and call for the vote.
Sure, Commissioner Ottinger?
Abstain, I was absent.
Okay, Commissioner Burns? Abstain, okay. Commissioner Hanley?
Abstain.
Vice Chair Fritz?
Aye.
And Chair Fernandez?
Aye.
Okay, those minutes, so the three abstentions are because you were not present?
Correct.
Okay, so I believe based on the rule, I'll confirm this with the city attorney, but I believe based on the rule of necessity of less than a quorum, we're at the meeting then that is allowed.
Good. Thank you. Moving on to minutes of July 18th, 2023, any changes or additions to that? Okay, don't see any.
I move we approve the minutes of July 18th, 2023.
Okay, motion to approve, we have second.
I'll second.
Okay, motion, second, call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Ottinger?
Abstain, I was excused.
Okay, Commissioner Burns?
I don't have any corrections.
Okay, so is that your, do you vote to approve the minutes as the?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hanley?
Abstain.
And Vice Chair Fritz?
Aye.
And Chair Fernandez?
Aye.
The minutes pass, that is a 3-0 vote with two abstentions from Commissioner Burns and Commissioner Hanley, who was not on the commission even at that time, so.
Okay, next, minutes of November 28th, 2023, or 20, yeah, 2023, any changes or additions to that? Okay, looking for a motion?
I move we approve the minutes of November, November 28th, 2023.
I second.
Okay, motion is second, call for the vote.
Commissioner Ottinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Aye.
Vice Chair Fritz?
Aye.
And Chair Fernandez?
Aye.
Okay, that is approved, 5-0.
Okay. And finally, minutes of December 12th, 2023, I actually just have one note on there. I am, was absent, but it was an excused absence, as I informed everyone ahead of time, so. Note that, any other changes or additions? Okay. I move that we approve the minute, or actually, since I wasn't here, I'm going to abstain, so perhaps someone else.
I move we approve the minutes of December 12th, 2023.
I second.
Okay, motion is second, call for the vote.
Commissioner Ottinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Burns?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hanley?
Abstain, I was absent.
Vice Chair Fritz?
Aye.
And Chair Fernandez?
Abstain.
Okay, so that is 3-0 with two abstentions from Chair Fernandez and Commissioner Hanley, thank you, Paul.
Okay, well, thank you for that, we got through all those, okay. So next up, item 5A, California Environmental Quality Act overview, informational overview of the CEQA.
Thank you, and I do have a slide presentation in the back of the room. And give me just a second to get that shared. Okay, so tonight's hearing is a little bit unusual and not something we do every day at the city, in fact, I've been here five and a half years, and this is the first draft EIR that this project, where a project has gone through that in my tenure here. So I did want to provide a little bit of overview, education both for the public on what this meeting is, as well as the commissioners, I know for many of you, this is also your first, at least three of you, maybe more, this is your first time having a environmental impact report come before you. So I do want to provide some context. The California Environmental Quality Act, I'll just very briefly talk about legislation, go over the phases, and I will talk about where we are in the process for this project, how an EIR works, and US decision makers, and also the city council, the decision maker responsibilities. CEQA was a landmark legislation adopted by the state in 1970, and guidelines followed in late, in the late 70s. We do get updates every year, a lot of that is based on either case law from court interpretations, or from legislation that the state enacts, amending the guidelines or that, amending the statute. And that can be anywhere from a exempting certain projects, like infill projects, or as you've seen earlier, from this type of review, the vehicle mile traveled, how we analyze circulation, which is a pretty large change. The purpose of CEQA, and this is pretty important to understand, it is a disclosure document. It's to look at the environmental impacts of a project. It is, and that's something to be used during the decision-making process. It is not a decision in itself, so it's not a pass/fail. It's, it's where we, as the planners, look through, and as you've read through the document, a huge list of potential impacts. We look at them and we see, you know, are, are there impacts to this particular mining, you know? No, it's not a mining, we're not a mining town, that's not a potential impact. But there are others, and so we look at each of those. And as we go through the document, we look at what, if that impact can be minimized and mitigated, to be less than significant, every project has an impact on a number of things, aesthetics, views, whatever. But is it a significant impact, and that is based on either legislative criteria or standards for the most part? And so those are the things that are, that we're analyzing it against, so they're sort of a factual basis to it. But again, all of this information is a disclosure of here's the potential environmental impacts and their significance, should the project move forward. It also does not, I will say, have really anything to do with the entitlements, so the conditional use permit, or the, the other sort of normal components that you're reviewing, that the project, the subdivision map and those types of things. Those are called the merits of the project, and that is something that we won't be talking about tonight. If people make comments tonight about that, we will take them down. This project will be returning to the Planning Commission for a recommendation to council, and then the council for final decision. We do anticipate that, along with the final draft environmental impact, or, sorry, the final environmental impact report, which will actually include responses to any comments that are made tonight regarding the environmental impacts. So, again, if it's about, I don't like the project, well, that's not really an environmental impact, so that's not necessarily going to get a response, but that is the, or I don't think it's a good idea. You know, that's, that's something that we, we go over when we review the entitlements before the commission. It all comes, will come back to you probably mid-March. So again, the purpose of CEQA is to disclose environmental impacts, and through the mitigations, are there ways the project can be modified, changed, to avoid or reduce environmental damage? And we also look at alternatives to the project, are there, and there are two or three in this, one is always no project, and that has its own impacts. And then what if you did a lesser project or a bigger project? In this case, are the alternatives that we looked at and discussed, would they have more or greater impacts? Or less impacts? The purpose of CEQA is also to disclose to the public information about the project, as well as the decision makers. We also do forward the notice that we've done this doc, prepared this document to other agencies that are impacted. So things like the county of Sonoma, because obviously this project is directly related to, adjacent to county, the city limits, the school, the Caltrans, water agencies and so forth. And we also, excuse me, send it to the state office of planning and research, and they do their own determination of who they think it should go to, along with our recommendations, and forwarded us as needed. And then, in the CEQA process, if there are impacts that are found to be significant, and that's the threshold of an environmentally significant impact, then the, the decision makers, the city council, would need to make findings and disclose the reasons for approving it anyway if they chose to approve it. And that, that's called a statement overriding considerations when they do that. As we get into this, the draft EIR for this project found that there would be no, what's called significant and unavoidable impacts. There are potential significant impacts, but they can be mitigated to be less than significant, as discussed in this, again, this is part of taking public comment on that, and then addressing if there are things we haven't thought about, or if there are questions about. So when do we do CEQA? Well, we actually do CEQA for pretty much every project that comes to you. It's something that most of our projects, like renovation of the building or new tenant, are exempt, because they've already been reviewed, that they're not going to have a threshold that's significant, unless there's something very unusual, and we as staff, as the planning department, can always pull something that is normally exempt and do CEQA on it. As I've told John and others, I've actually done an initial study for CEQA on single, a couple of single-family homes in my life, because they were, you know, one was on a former landslide site, so, you know, that type of thing. So that's our job as planners, but we, CEQA applies to any project when the government undertakes a project, so any projects that we do, like the AmeriCorps Trail, or road improvements, the Bodega Avenue improvements, that type of thing, when we approve a project, which is obviously applicable to this, and when we fund a project. So if we do a grant for a project, then that is something where they, we need to do that. It applies to the physical environmental impacts. It does not cover social or economic impacts, unless they result in physical environmental impacts. And that is actually where our entitlement process is, those are, you know, a little bit more outside of the environment in terms of the use permit, is this, you know, is this a good idea, is it good for the community question? You will see some, or you have seen in the report where it refers to lead agency, and that is just the agency who is, has the responsibility to carry out the CEQA review for a project within the city, unless it's owned by the county or a state agency, is the responsibility of the city. Just quickly on the phases, the first thing we do is we determine if it is a project under CEQA. A lot of things, like your approval of minutes, while you approve something, why don't we do CEQA? It's not a project under CEQA. We do a preliminary review. If it is a project, and we determined if it is exempt for some reason. Like I said, that a new tenant in a building is generally exempt. The, if we do think, if it's not exempt, then we need to do an initial study. And I know some of you have seen initial studies, and that's where we go through the checklist of all the potential impacts, and look at whether or not they are, the impacts are less than significant. And if they are, then you don't need to do an EIR, you adopt a mitigated negative declaration, or a negative declaration. But the initial study is, you have to do it if it's not exempt, even if you kind of feel like it's a no-brainer, and I know we've had some where it's a zoning amendment, and it doesn't, or a planned community, and other than that, it would have been fine, it would have been exempt, but because of that, it needs to go through that initial study. And then if you do find that there are potential impacts that are, that could be significant, then you need to do an EIR. And then the other option is to not do an initial study and skip directly to an EIR, which is what the applicant wanted to do in this process, they felt like, yeah, it's a big project for the city. After talking with staff, we all agreed, this was, you know, this is a big project for the city. It's, in some towns, it's not, and it would be, it would be in one of these other categories. But recognizing that, we did want to make sure we did our due diligence, and that's where we're at today. I think I'll skip this, this is just, there's a lot of different types of exemptions. In a normal meeting, I'd like to go over some of these with you for training, but we can talk about that at a later time. And again, the, the initial study has a set period and comment period that it goes through. That's not what we're here tonight, what we're here tonight is a draft EIR. And so the process for this is a little bit different, a little bit more intense. We have a notice of preparation, which is a letting everyone know that we are going to be doing this document. And we, we do send that to the tribes, to see if they want to do tribal consultation. We did not get any requests for that for this project. And then we sent it to all of the various other agencies like Caltrans, who might have interest. We also noticed the public, and we did that in conjunction with a scoping meeting, which I believe some of you attended. And actually, some of you guys probably attended as well, in the audience. And so that was, I forget when in this project's schedule, July, that's probably correct, to get kind of the initial, what are the things we should be looking at? And so we did hear from a number of folks in the public, and those are, those, some of those considerations, like drainage and the trees and that kind of stuff, are included in the analysis in this document. We have put together the draft document. This is, and it has a required 45-day public comment period, you can extend it. But this is, and this is the last day of the public comment period, we've already received a number, and anything that's brought forth tonight will also become part of that. And here's something that is a little bit different from other meetings. We take public comment, but the Planning Commission is not going to deliberate, and Steph isn't going to respond live to those comments. One of the things that is unique to the CEQA process is that you, we will be preparing written responses to all of those, and issuing that as part of a, including any modifications to the project, as part of a final EIR. That will still be a draft final, is what it's called. And that, plus the project, the rest of the sort of normal review project entitlements, will come back to this body as the Planning Commission. That'll be the March, I think it's March 12th is our target date for that. So we'll be listening tonight, we won't necessarily be responding, and I want to make sure you all understand that's why it's, but you will get a written response, in, in fact. If you comment about things that aren't part of the environmental process, but are part of the other part, you may, the response may be, this is not an environmental impact, and that, it doesn't mean, John's the planner here for this project, so he'll still hear the comments and be, and, he's got some business cards here. He's got some business cards if you have questions or things like that about the project as well. But the final EIR will come back to you, and then of course you'll be recommending to the city council, because there is a subdivision included, and they would be the final body to certify the project and make the decision. In the document, there are a number of what we call levels of significance. Again, there's no impact, because it's a mining, it's, it's mining and we're not a mining town, there's less than significant impact, which are, you know, they don't rise to that threshold, and I can't think of one in particular for this document off the top of my head, but there are, there are a few that are less than significant. You don't need to mitigate, you don't need to do anything, it's just less than significant. There are significant impact before mitigation, but it can be mitigated to where it is less than significant. And again, this document is noting that any potentially significant impacts can be reduced. And then the, the final level is, it's significant and you can't avoid it. And the best example of this is if you're going to tear down a historic house that has historic significance. If you tear it down, you can't avoid that impact, so that's one where it's a clear example of what that means. You could potentially relocate it, but if it loses its, you know, location, then it's still going to be significant. And again, these, these levels are in relationship to regulatory standards, so. Decision maker responsibilities, we'll go over this again when it comes back to you in March, just to remind you, but certification means that the EIR complies with CEQA. Their process, we've done the comment periods and everything, that you've reviewed the information, and then it reflects the agency's judgment. And there's sort of some bullets of what that all means. Just for general CEQA training, it can be, a project can be adequate, or a CEQA can be adequate, even if it has significant impacts. And there's a few other things that are sort of, you know, the, the kind of one thing that we might make sure we do, that we don't, you can't defer a mitigation, that is one of the things that CEQA is. So if you find us an impact that needs to be mitigated, you need to know what the mitigation is. Now, you can't say, now, you know, we do have some for like archaeology, because we've done the research and the, it's, it's a low likelihood. But if you do find something, then you need to do this, that, and the other, so that's, it's already in there in terms of what those steps would be. And then if it, the mitigation isn't adequate, then yes, we need to define what those would be. And that's part of this comment period. Just because the EIR says everything will be fine, does, you can, you know, you can still, you can't deny the project because of the CEQA. Again, it's not a decision-making tool, it's a disclosure. You can choose to deny the project because of environmental impacts. You can require changes to reduce significant impacts. You can approve it despite the significant impacts, it is not in itself a decision-making tool. And similarly, every EIR needs to have a environmentally superior alternative. It does not mean that you need to select that, and in fact, for housing projects under the state law, the SB 330, the Housing Accountability Act, if it, if it still meets all the standards, then you can't require them to do that significant, the environmentally superior alternative. So those are kind of the decision-making points, and some of the things you saw in the document. And again, I think we already reviewed this, and we'll get more into the findings as we come back to you, because that will have the actual findings, resolution with the findings. Okay, so do you want to see if we have any questions from?
Yeah, any questions in general about CEQA? I just have just one. I guess it's subjective as far as, when we talk about mitigations, like, how is it determined? It's nothing that's like, has a book that says, if this is the project and the mitigation is this, and that the level of mitigation. Is there like a, a general guidance for that, or is it just subjective?
It's, it's not necessarily subjective at all. The, for instance, with the vehicle mile traveled, which is the newest metric, if you're, the requirement is to reduce VMT, as we call it, the vehicle mile traveled by 15%, that's the, sort of the going rate that the state sets unless you adopt local standards, which we'll be doing in the next couple of months, but we're not there yet, so we have the 15%. If a project did not meet that, they would need to mitigate until they were meeting that threshold. So it's actually, and those mitigations, the Office of Planning and Research at the state has done a lot of, well, if you were to do this or that to, you know, change the number of vehicle miles traveled, it would change by, it would change by this much percentage, and that's based on research that they've done and others have done. And so a lot of this stuff is actually migratory birds, it's a, you know, you need to do a nesting study if it's between certain months for certain birds, to make sure there aren't nests. And the mitigation can be things like waiting until after the fledglings have fled the nest to start construction, if there are nests, that avoids the impacts to that year's, you know, breed, breeding. So that, so they're all kind of, yeah, and there's a long history of CEQA since the 70s of, and things get updated, but it is based on that kind of logic.
Okay, great. I didn't see anybody else have questions. This is just a presentation, so we don't need to open up for public comment, right, or do we? In general?
It is a regular agenda item, so I would open it for public comment, in case public has questions that you might want to respond to.
Yeah, so I'll open up for public comment, so this is just in general, the questions about CEQA, not necessarily CEQA as it relates to the project, which will be at the next agenda item. Okay? So if anybody has any questions? Yes? Yeah, thank you. And then we're going to go from in-person then to online, right?
Yep, that's, that is our process.
Thank you, that was very helpful, my name is Laura Duggan from Sebastopol. It's sort of what you asked, but I just want more clarification, when one of the slides said that you could determine if something was just not significant and didn't need mitigation. The determination that it was not significant and didn't need mitigation, or wasn't even worth consideration, I think was the term. That's not subjective, that's based on some standard, like noise, for example?
Correct. So one of the, will you impact any national agricultural land, or will you impact mining? Well, the project isn't anywhere near a mine. Well, the project isn't anywhere near a mine site, so you're not going to impact mining. It's a yes or no question.
Something like noise, which seems sometimes subjective, is noise, there must be a standard where you say this noise level doesn't need to be considered.
Sure, so we actually as a city have adopted noise ordinance standards and so that is that standard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Okay, so I will close public.
Oh, I'm sorry, we do have Kyle and I'll ask you to unmute Kyle.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So before I get started, I also wanted to speak to Chair to remind him that during public comment for items that are not on the agenda, there are also Zoom participants. And so closing public comment prematurely without making reference to those Zoom participants is putting Zoom participants at a disadvantage. But to speak particularly to this agenda item, I'm wondering because it seems like we're being told pretty clear messaging that tonight's public comment needs to be indirectly related to the SEQA report. And so I also think that in order to be able to make that justification or that judgment call on whether or not a public comment is within that frame of reference, I think it would be great to provide some guidance to public. Do public need to be citing particular section numbers of the SEQA report? Because what I would hate to see is that participants of the public who are in good faith making efforts to make public comment about the SEQA report itself, but that this body decides that those comments may stray too far away from the SEQA report and then to decide to not make some sort of a reference to those or respond to those as a result of that. So some guidance as to how members of the public can meet the standard that you're holding for staying within the scope of commenting on SEQA, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you Kyle. And I can answer that as, I just want to make sure we don't have any other questions on the SEQA process from the audience here or in Zoom. Okay, I saw a couple new people. So I'll get to that and just, I'll answer that question in just a second. Yep. So I don't see any further public comment if you want to close that.
Okay, we'll close that and Kyle apologized for not having the.
Sorry, you, sorry, hold on. You come up to the podium because this is being recorded so those in Zoom land can see this.
And I apologize for being sort of a newbie about this, but I think it was kind of frustrating that there was this, you know, signs up in front of the property, but there was no real way of how, you know, it would be really lovely if the information that's on this page about how to actually read the SEQA reports would have been, would have been covered. It just said that it existed. So anyway, just going forward, that might be helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Got it. And you can always contact your local planning department is, is all I'd say about that one. But yeah, it is, the public notices that went out, that were published and mailed to residents did note that the report was available and the link for that, so.
So it takes care of that, right. And then, oh yeah, go ahead and respond first.
Yeah, and then Kyle in terms of your comment and the gentleman here in terms of what is SEQA and what is not, you are welcome to comment on anything you want. I'm not saying we're going to cut you off. But if it is not, we can, we'll determine whether it's part of this document or not. And if it is, it will get responded to as part of the final EIR. And then, you know, we're humans and John is here listening and if he hears concerns, we'll try to address those when we do the staff report for the non-SEQA items that'll be coming back in March. So you, you don't have to sort of editorialize yourself, just please talk about what it is that you have concerns about or want to say about the project and we will, we will do the work of, you know, how to bring it all together as we go through the project.
Great, thank you. And for my oversight of closing public comment items not on the agenda and not giving the virtual audience a chance, could we do it at the end or how would you?
Or you could do it once this item is completed.
Okay.
So you could do it right now, for instance.
Okay, well, why don't we just do that right now? So for anyone that's online, has any comments for any items that are not on tonight's agenda?
Okay, this is for items not on the agenda. We already worked with the in-room unless someone else has joined in room. I do say Sandy and then Kyle. So Sandy, we'll go to you first. Did you, can you ask her to unmute? Okay, Sandy, can you unmute yourself? Okay, well, wait a second. Why don't we move on to Kyle then? And Kyle, can you go ahead and unmute yourself?
Yeah, I can, thanks.
And you'll have three minutes and Suzie has the timer for that. Do you have that up?
Great, so I just really want to make a quick reference to our general plan and specifically the noise ordinance for our general plan. Sebastopol's developing. There's been a significant number of high density residential developments as, as well as some other developments that are happening within our city limits. If you look in our general plan, there's specific language about revisiting and revising our noise ordinance. As someone who's experienced violations of our noise ordinance with no significant retribution or any sort of significant enforcement mechanism, reporting, there's no real reporting mechanism, there's no real enforcement mechanism, really, we're as, as members of the public, we're kind of at a loss as being able to see our noise ordinance be enforced in any sort of reasonable way. Even things such as our specific daytime hours are not being recognized by developers either by some sort of variance that's being granted by our city or by just the nature of the development itself. So I'd like to know what the planning commission has planned in terms of when, or when they have previously in the recent times since our general plan has been developed, looked at our noise ordinance and what current plans they have of looking at noise ordinance as we move into the future with so much development that seems to be happening within our city. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you Kyle, and we will go back to Sandy. Okay, we've been asking her to unmute, but I'm not seeing her do so.
Did she step away? I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure, sometimes people do do that. Let me try just sending her a quick. Well, when we ask her to unmute, it pops up on her screen, so all she has to do is click I'm not getting, so we can close public comment and try to come back to it after this next item?
All right, so we have closed public comment items not on the agenda and let's move on to item 6A. 1009, 1011, Gravestine Highway North, Canopy Draft, EIR hearing.
Thank you, so this is the main event and why everyone's here, I'm sure. So I explained what the, what this, what this huge document is. John is the project planner, is going to go over what the project is in a couple of notes.
Yeah, and before we start, I just wanted the public know, so we're going to have staff give us explanation, information on the project and then we'll have opportunity for commissions to ask questions of staff. And then after we're done with that, then we'll open it up for public comment.
Right, and I would say for the planning commission, if you can, just like you do in normal, limit your questions before public comment to clarifications and then after public comment, provide any of your own public comments or concerns with the draft EIR at that time. That way we'll get a little bit mixed up.
Great, thank you for that.
Thank you. Before we start, I just wanted to let folks at the commission know there are some audio issues that some of the members of the public are having difficulty hearing. So if you guys could speak into the microphones a little bit louder, that would help some of the folks in the audience. So with that, I will provide the report. So an environmental impact report or EIR has been drafted and made public since December 7th of 2023 for the Canopy Residential Project at 1009, 1011 Gravestine Highway North. This is also called the project in the EIR document. This project is a residential housing development proposing 80 units with a potential of 16 ADA accessory dwelling units on site. The purpose of this meeting again is to provide an opportunity for the public, interested agencies and the planning commission to provide comments on the draft EIR. Again, all comments received during the public comment period related to the environmental impacts both at this hearing and directly to the planning department will be responded to in the final EIR. Comments received that are related to the entitlements but non-environmental impacts will be accepted but will be addressed at future public hearings on the project entitlements described below. So once again, this is a 80 unit residential solar all-electric three-story townhome style condominium project with, again, the potential for 16 ADA, ADA use. The project will require the city's approval of a conditional use permit, site development review, design review, tree removal permit, investing tentative track map. In addition, the project applicant proposes to use the state density bonus law to allow a waiver to increase the building height to three stories. One final note on the EIR that was released, impact TRA dash one, which is related to a new pedestrian pathway, which would require, this, this impact requires an easement through an adjoining property or the O'Reilly Building. And the adjacent property owner, where the pathway is proposed, is not amenable to this pathway in that location, but is open to a pedestrian pathway to the south of their buildings. To staff, this is, this mitigation is acceptable and still meets the criteria of providing a pathway through the site which will connect to the proposed hot crossing at the intersection of 116 and Danmar Drive. Staff will incorporate this note into the final EIR as a project cannot be conditioned upon the approval of another property owner and the mitigation is still provided. So with that, I'll conclude the report that I have and open it up to the planning commission to ask any clarification questions.
Okay, I also noticed that, or saw that some of the commissioners had questions that were sent out. That'll be made part of the report, right?
Correct.
Anybody, go ahead, start us off.
Yes, and my question is about that pedestrian sidewalk. You are talking about the one to the south of the project and O'Reilly. You're not talking about a potential sidewalk that would go north toward the, to the West County Trail?
Correct.
Okay, just that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other question or clarifications? No? Okay, so I'll go ahead and open public comment then, and Carrie, go ahead and run it.
Yeah, thank you. And again, we will, if you have a comment, then you can wait a little while, I'm assuming most of you might have public comments. Go ahead and go up to the podium and you'll have three minutes. Suzie will have the timer, which will be up on the screen and we'll also let you know when the three minutes is up. And if you have additional comments that you'd like to submit to us, the public notice or you can hand them in tonight or you can email them to us at the planning department. And John, I don't know if you have, I'm going to ask you to get some cards out and put them on the back table so they can, so that that's the person to email them to. So, and we will go back and forth, one person in the room and one person via Zoom until there are no more questions or comments.
So anyone like to make comment, please step up to the podium.
Hello, everybody. Jacob Harris, I live on Hurlebutt and after hearing about the Canopy Project, I've spoken with my neighbors and see how they felt about it and they were not too excited about it for a few reasons, but I think that the main complaint that is, is that it is not conforming with the neighborhood. So let me read to what I read from the general plan for Sebastopol. It says on policy CD 1 dash 2, city will ensure that new residential and commercial development is sensitive to the surrounding architecture, topography, landscape, character, scale and ambience of the surrounding neighborhood. So the point being, there are no three-story and hardly any two-story buildings in the neighborhood. So the plan of Canopy does not conform and we've all agreed to that. It does not conform to the city plan. So the city plan might have to adjust, might have to make some changes to your city plan for it to conform. In addition, that was the main point, but here, number two in your, in your city plan, the land use element provides for development and resource conservation pattern that preserves and protects Sebastopol's unique character, small town feel, family oriented neighborhoods. And we don't feel it conforms there as well. You have goal LU 2, a part of the plan that says it will maintain an urban growth boundary in order to promote orderly growth. Well, we don't feel that we have orderly growth because that, for one example, is the traffic right now backs up to Hurlebutt from downtown and you put in 96 more units, which is probably close to 200 more people, it's not going to make that any better. So that doesn't seem to conform either. LU 2.4, that the proposed development will provide a minimum of 50% of its dwellings, dwelling units for low and very low income households as defined by the housing element of this general plan. I'm not sure, I don't think this plan provides for 50% for low income. So again, not conforming to your general plan. Did you say something? No?
I think she was telling you your time is almost up.
Almost up, okay, one more. Policy COS 9.1, 9 dash 1, you require all new, all new public and privately construct buildings to meet and comply with Cal Green Tier 1 or successor program standards. That one I don't know about, but if, if this project does go through, I'm assuming you will, I'd like to know if you're going to follow that.
Any, if we could, yeah, just please, if you agree, it's great, but we try not to get confrontational whether it's approved or not. So please hold the applause, thank you.
Yes, and so now we would go to any comments from anyone on Zoom? If you do have a comment, if you could raise your hand. Okay, I see Sean McGuire. Sean, can you unmute yourself? And you have three minutes.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. This is more of a question than a comment, but I'm curious how this project is going to integrate with the school, specifically around pickup and drop-off times and how that traffic is going to impact the school and the surrounding streets. And that's all I have. I guess I, will, will questions from the audience be addressed at the end or at all?
Yeah, well, oh no.
No, so this is, this is the, yeah, this is the unusual nature of EIRs. We are accepting comments tonight, but we are not responding to them and this is actually and this is actually something that would be responded to as part of the EIR, the written responses.
Yeah, so you will be getting that information.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Good.
Good evening, planning commission. My name is Troy Eggleston, resident of Hurlbut Avenue. I think something that needs to be taken into consideration here, I think when we're looking at the visual aesthetics, the impacts that were viewed as not significant for something that's three floors, three stories, at 36 feet, that's noncompliant with the designs or the existing community, I have a hard time looking at the policies in the general plan, looking at the proposal and how that would not be viewed as a significant impact, being that the type of function or the design that's being applied is really noncompliant to the existing community. It doesn't comply with the general plan, and that would be essentially-- though, we understand there's a outside influence on the height from the state for these density bonuses, it still is in conflict. We don't find that to be really a comprehensive approach to this application. It's really, it's not conforming. Also, something that needs to be evaluated is the pad height through drainage grading. In order for this to actually be able to drain, your pad heights are going to essentially have to be raised. We'll get into soil remediation in one, you know, in a second, but aside from the 36 feet, which would be noncompliant to the existing community, additional pad heights, be able to acquire for drainage passageways, overall improvements, we don't really know how tall that's actually going to be until the subdivision improvement plans come in. By then, it's a little bit too late. I think it needs to be evaluated about what type of impact this has, because it's really-- stands out from that existing community. It's not compliant, and it doesn't blend in with anything, which, again, it's outside of the policies in the community design 1-2. It goes next into soil remediation. I think you had brought up earlier, we're going to have an issue with enforcement. I work from home, and when we're going to be dealing with any type of soil removal, grading, infrastructure improvements, the sound attenuation, the policies that are in place, are they going to be monitored? Are they going to be enforced? What are the tools that are going to be there that we know that we can rely on? Because I don't think we have any faith that it would. Traditionally, once something gets up and running, they throw out, you know, the dust truck, and they'll start watering it, and whatever comes of that, maybe some of the voices that are going to be complaining would be muted. We don't need that. I don't, because I'll be one directly affected by this type of an impact. It won't go over well for me. I'm online all the time doing my own conference calls, that type of sound, that type of noise. It needs to be enforced, and we would need to have some sort of a daily policing for this. It would be imperative. Aside from that, I look at the overall design, circulation of this. Again, not compliant with all the goals and policies in the general plan. I don't think that this was taken into full consideration. They took a highly initial design. They reduced the overall unit count to be something that would be viewed as more acceptable, but really, they're just essentially avoiding the existing trees for the project that was built 20 years ago when we told them not to. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And again, please refrain from clapping, because if someone has a comment to the contrary, we don't want to be intimidating anyone. This needs to be a place where anyone can feel free to comment. Thank you. And I do want to note, if you do have comments that you don't get to, you could either leave them in the back or email them to John. His cards are in the back. Thank you. And so next, we'll go to someone on Zoom.
Yes.
And we'll try again with Sandy. Sandy, I'm going to ask you to unmute, and if you could do that and make your public comment. Okay, I'm not seeing her unmute, so Suzie, I might ask you to text her through the chat feature, and I'll move on to Kyle, and you can see if you can help her with that. Kyle, can you unmute yourself and go ahead with your public comment, Kyle?
Yeah, okay. So I just want to go ahead and start off and talk a little bit about Section 2 of CEQA, primarily just about zoning. In the report, and actually what we saw, maybe in the report, is this idea that somehow that the surrounding neighborhood for this site is residential, and that's just not really the case. It may border a residential neighborhood, but there's no actual inlet to that residential neighborhood that it neighbors on the backside. So there's not really any sort of transportation network that's involved in the situation where we would say that the surrounding neighborhood would be residential. The current zoning of this location is light industrial. Its neighbors are commercial, and in the CEQA report, it specifically makes reference to the, our general plan's desire for having commercial districts, industrial parks of this nature. The only other residential neighborhood in the surrounding area is also on the other side of the street, and it's not neighboring in the sense that there's any sort of frontage residential. There's a reason for that. Highway 116 is a major highway, and producing residential neighborhoods on a major highway like that is going to have negative impacts, which are also made reference to within this report. I think it's really important that when we're taking a look at these things, looking at the community impact, what kind of impact are we going to be having on the surrounding-- the residential neighborhood behind there? What kind of impact is this going to have on the traffic, our traffic flow in this area? Thinking about sustainability and planning, right? Long-term, how does jumping from an industrial zoning to not just residential, but the highest density of residential that our city allows? We couldn't have gone with single-family, we couldn't have even gone with R6. We went straight to R7 in a neighborhood that has not had any residential historically. How is that going to look down the road in terms of being able to provide sustainability for property owners in the surrounding area, for future homeowners wanting to get into the housing market? Affordable housing, it's not clear that this project meets the goals, as other speaker mentioned, that it meets the goals of the city's general plan about providing affordable housing, based on the mix of the properties that are, or the mix of the properties as they're being presented. And then, in terms of the process and transparency, I'm really just hoping that we can really open up this process and make sure that there's a lot of transparency in the way that the city communicates out what we see through CEQA, what the community, what the city reports out in terms of what the public's opinions have been about this property. And I really, really encourage this body to look at the alternatives section of the CEQA report. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Sorry, we'll go back to someone, anyone in the room who'd like to make a comment? Please come up to the microphone.
Good evening. My name's Ann Casey Nielsen. I'm a neighbor of Jacob Harris. He shared data with me this morning that I'm going to comment on. I also own the property on Hurlbut Avenue. I propose for a disallowment of a state density bonus, striking any, all potential waivers to increase the building height to three stories. Any allotment of set aforementioned waiver would be a direct violation with Sebastopol's general plan, policy CD1-2. Again, let's reiterate and focus on this philosophy. Ensure that new residential and commercial development is sensitive to the surrounding architecture, topography, landscaping, character, scale, and ambience of the surrounding neighborhood. The project plan is 100 units and will likely be over 40 feet tall, including foundations. Currently, there are zero residential buildings in our neighborhood with this height or density. In subnation, I strongly oppose to the project altogether. However, I'm willing to civically compromise to a two-story edifice instead. I'm a retired Stanford medical professional. If I wanted to remain in Silicon Valley, I would have remained in Silicon Valley. I moved to Sebastopol because of the tiny and quaint, small motif that it exudes. If we allow this, then everyone will join, and I might as well move back to Silicon Valley. Thank you.
Suzie? Okay, Suzie, are you still working on the tech issues? Okay, so if there's anyone else on Zoom who has a public comment, go ahead, raise your hand. Suzie is working with Sandy to see if we can't get her. But in the meantime, let's go ahead-- oh, you're saying trying now? Okay. Sandy, can you try again with your comment? And I'm going to ask Zach at our tech support if he can also try to communicate with Sandy and see if we can get that resolved as to why she can't unmute herself. Okay, in the meantime, we'll go ahead and-- the next person in the room who wants to make a comment?
Good evening. My name is Richard Murphy, and I'm a Hurlbut resident, and I definitely do not approve of this project here. And most of the comments that have already been made echo what Jacob was saying and the other fellow was saying, and what Ann was saying is totally true. The other thing I want to add to that is that, you know, you guys probably know that a lot of traffic comes up east Hurlbut from High School Road and cuts over on Hurlbut to 116, so they're going north on 116 up to Forestville or up to some other area. So the traffic is already getting pretty bad coming through there, and there's, of course, no speed bumps except the one there at the trail. So it's only going to get worse, and I don't know, you probably may be doing the same thing with this project as far as not allowing cars to come out in the back of Hurlbut, but it's going to impact that whole area. Traffic's going to be just horrendous, especially with the school and everything else there. It's going to be really terrible. I also want to comment on the height. I mean, it's kind of ridiculous to even think of three stories on Hurlbut Avenue, because it's really Hurlbut and 116. To go that 40 feet tall, it's just, it's ludicrous to be thinking about something of that nature. I think, like everybody else said, it should be a residential situation, two stories at the maximum. So appreciate any comment, anything you could do. I do want to ask one question, too, is that, when is our final time to look over the EIR, basically?
So the EIR has been out for 45 days, and tonight is the day for that final comment day. That was on all the notices that were sent out. And, I mean, we can consider things that are received after, but, you know, we're our consultant, and we need to start working on the actual public responses to those comments. So if something comes in before, after tomorrow, we are not going to be able to accept it.
I see. And you mentioned public notice. I didn't get anything in the mail or anything in notice for our neighborhood. A lot of our neighbors, I'm sure, would like to be here tonight if they knew what was really going on.
Right, so we mail within 600 feet of the property, so that's--
It's emailed to where?
It's mailed in the public mail.
Yeah.
Postcards that we have, and it's 600 feet from the property lines.
600 feet, I see, that's all.
Which is basically two blocks.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, so if there's a-- so I will say, you're not up at the microphone, but I will respond to that. It's okay, I just, I want to repeat it because we have people out there who might have the same question or thought. So the notices were sent out. They are required to be sent 10 days before the hearing, which is what we did. I'm not sure what's going on with the post office, but I was there in the office when they were sent out, so I know they were sent out that day, and also posted in the Press Democrat at that same time. And so, you know, there's, obviously, it's-- and our code specifically does say that it-- when you receive it, and obviously, you had some additional time to review it with the meeting being postponed to tonight.
Well, I--
And I probably shouldn't have responded, and I apologize, just in terms of the protocols.
Yeah.
But we can talk to you after the meeting, if you'd like.
I did know about the meeting, but I was shocked to receive it in the mail on that day.
Got it. Okay.
My name is Nina Redmond, and I live on East Hurlbut, so I didn't, I didn't know, I wasn't following all the meetings and so forth. But I just wanted to say that there are an awful lot of pedestrians on East Hurlbut. We don't have any sidewalks, so anything that increases traffic worries me. You know, there are a lot of, there are also a lot of pets and stuff, so that's just an issue. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, and I think until I hear from Suzie or Zach on Sandy being able to comment, I'm going to just continue with the public comment in the room, since there aren't any other on Zoom. So if you have a public comment, again, please come to the podium, so that those who are on Zoom and the recording of this video, which is posted to our website, everyone can hear the comments.
Thank you. This is just a clarification. I believe earlier when you were going through the CEQA protocol, you mentioned that there could be an extension of the 45 days, but you didn't clarify under what conditions there could be an extension, since I heard some people saying they needed more time to--
So we do not-- that's usually for a circumstance that is not part of the normal component of it. So we wouldn't be extending this. It's 40-- it's already been a month and a half.
So there's no extension policy?
Correct, yeah, okay.
And Carrie, if I understand what you said, so at the end of tomorrow is the deadline for--
Well, tonight is technically the deadline, and so we don't have to consider any comments after that. If people have comments that they've made tonight and want to type up and send to us, I think that would be fine.
Okay. Would you consider--
So to legally extend it is actually a, sort of a more formal thing in terms of CEQA, so we need to keep it at tonight.
So today, so tonight's the 45th day?
Correct.
Okay.
And I do want to make sure that everyone knows that, you know, if you send in a comment, again, the project hearing isn't until March, and so, you know, in terms of the project considerations, we'll still be able to look at those comments and take those into consideration.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Okay, it looks like we have Phil Carter.
Yes, I just, I know that the sidewalk becomes broken about there on that side of the main road, and I'm just kind of curious if this development-- and I didn't read thoroughly, so I apologize-- if it includes development of pedestrian ways or even bike-ride ways around the entrance to Hurlbut. That's all.
Thank you.
Okay, and Phil, I'm going to take your hand down, and I believe you've already heard from Sean, but he had a very, very brief comment. I don't know, Carrie, it's up to you.
Yeah, I'll allow it.
Okay, so Sean, I'll go ahead and-- sorry, you were unmuted. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. I apologize for that. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'll try to keep it to three minutes between total questions. I was able to go online and find the actual plans, the aerial view. It's good for residents of Hurlbut that there's no exit out there, but this project is trying to have 100 units residents exit and enter through a business's parking lot? How are people going to turn left from O'Reilly onto 116 South, crossing traffic? They won't be able to. They'll go through the entrance and exit to the school. It just-- at morning and afternoon, it's going to be an absolute nightmare for 200 families. And I live in Santa Rosa. We have a much higher wildfire risk than you guys have experienced in Sebastopol, but that also, just from a safety standpoint, 100 units trying to exit through a parking lot does not seem like a very good idea to me, and thank you for the additional time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to-- yes, thank you, in the room, you're next.
Hi, thanks so much. My name is Emily Okon. I live at 896 Hurlbut Street, so I'm on Hurlbut Avenue. I'm on the south side of the project, sharing the property line with that field. I just wanted to express-- I just wanted to express, I put my comments in an email to John Jay. Thank you for taking them. I've got two young kids. They're here tonight. And so I'm a resident that has family that's impacted in this area. And I want to echo the comments that were shared earlier tonight. Thank you for raising issues with the density and the height of the project. My bathrooms are north facing, both of them, and a residential building at 36 or 40 feet would really impact the kind of natural light in my house and privacy. So that's something I just wanted to share and I'm concerned about. I remember the Searies Community Garden was on that property line, the lower lot of the space. And I voiced a concern about contaminated soil. And so I just wanted to look into the report and determine whether that was solved with the, within the EIR. And then lastly, I wanted to just ask if there were any plans in this space for any kind of community space. I know there will be parklets and there will be a certain amount of distance between the nearest path or the nearest building. But I wanted to understand what the distance was from the building to, you know, my property line and see what that was like. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go to Irene Rennie. Go ahead.
There we go. I'm here. Hi, my name's Rennie Magulis and I have lived for almost 20 years across the street from the O'Reilly Building on Grabenstein Highway North. Grabenstein Highway North used to be somewhat quiet and has gotten worse over the years. So much so, a couple of minutes ago, as a truck was passing by, my house was shaking. That is new within the last couple of years that the traffic has increased such. When the school went in, it is hard for me to get out of our driveway because of the amount of traffic that is now going down Grabenstein Highway North with the school. And it took a while, but there were people coming onto my property because of it. And we also have the homeless RV park down the street, which has caused people to come down and be on my property. And Sebastopol Police, they don't respond to me because O'Reilly, my understanding is in the city limits, and I'm right across the street and I'm the sheriff. And so there's a lot of issues. I'm a social worker. I'm all about supporting this. But there's a lot of things people don't think about. Our property floods. It is flooded right now and we have livestock. And it comes down from when people build. And the same thing happened at the Barlow a couple of years ago. So how are you going to, you're going to keep the property that you're about to build on safe, but you're not going to keep my property and other people's property safe? During the fires, when we were evacuated, to get my livestock onto the trailers and to get out, it took almost eight hours to get out of town. When you add 100 more units, that's 150 to 200 more cars in a small area. How are you going to ensure that we all can evacuate safely? And that will increase the fire danger of my property. So that concerns me as well. So the question would be, what are you going to do if this is, it sounds like it's being agreed upon, but what are you going to do to keep us safe? That I've been living here for as long as we have, knowing that you're probably going to have to widen the roads, which will cause problems on my property and will cause problems on Hurlebut and those other properties that you're going to be putting all this new traffic in. The project makes no sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to in-room. Anyone with a public comment? Okay, seeing none. I think, I think we are done.
Okay, if there is no others, I will close public comment at this point. And again, just reiterate that this was public comment for the environment impact report for this project. You can still, we'll still also have opportunity to speak about the project in, as a whole.
Sorry, Chair, I do want to note that we did receive, for anyone who's listening, but not making comment, we did receive a number of public comments prior to, actually, in between when the last meeting was supposed to be and this meeting. Those have been forwarded to our planning commissioners and also we are reviewing in the same process. They're also posted to our website for tonight's meeting date if anyone wants to look at that. And then just in terms of, there are a couple of comments and questions about, is there access for Hurlebut and that kind of things? On the city's website, we do have the materials under tonight's meeting page. But there's also, if you go under the Building and Development Projects or search the planning page, there is a full page that has the documentation, including the preliminary review information that was held a couple of years ago. We have a lot more information on the website, just in terms of if people are asking in addition to this document.
Okay, great. All right, so bring it back to Planning Commission for comments. If you have additional questions to staff or clarifications as well. Go ahead. I don't think, let's hit it again. Oh, here. I don't think it's the light. I think it's just not here.
How about this one? Is this speaker on? Okay. I can't hear, so I don't know if you guys can hear me. I spent a lot of time researching this prior to the meeting and was fortunate enough to have long conversations with John about it. So I could come feeling really prepared. I really do feel for all the public who is, who is by this project. I do see a lot of flaws with this and I think this is something we really need to consider as a commission. You know, there's the infrastructure issue we have in Sebastopol. Traffic is absolutely outrageous. And the amount of time it takes to get into the city, I feel like we are going to really dissuade people from wanting to work in Sebastopol, come to Sebastopol. It already, I clocked it since this. It took me a half hour one day to go from that school to downtown. And that was not when their school was getting out, but the high school was impacted at that time. I'm very concerned about there being no Hurlebut, even exit or entrance, even if it is just for emergency. I don't know how we're going to evacuate all these people in, you know, I mean, we're dealing with all these fires. I don't know what the water impact is going to be. I know I read the report and it said that there would be sufficient water. Where is this water coming from? You know, how do we, you know, how do we, how do we know that that's an issue? I do think that it doesn't fit within our general plan. And, you know, three stories, I understand we're up against the, you know, state of California to continue to increase housing, and I totally get it. And, you know, I also don't think we're addressing the low-income housing issue that we have here. You know, providing, you know, low, low income. And I'm just, I feel like we're at this stage where there's so many things going on that there's a lot for us to consider for this project to move forward. And just the impact to the whole community, more or less the people who are, you know, living, living right there. So environmental, you know, access in and out, infrastructure with, with traffic, the amount of cars that'll be there. If it's 103 units, I imagine how many cars will be there? And I really don't see how they can use those too. I can't even, I walk on that trail all the time. I don't know what's up with that light, but it never changes. Sometimes I literally pull out and go to the other one and make a different turn. So, you know, just all those cars exiting from those two, you know, from those two entrances. I just think it's, Sebastopol has not built the infrastructure to keep up with the demand of all the growth we have. And so I think these are things we really need to look at, which is infrastructure to continue the demand and how do we, how do we migrate both of these and stay within our master plan and meet all of these housing needs? So I would like to see more conversation, you know, about how we can kind of tackle some of these, some of these bigger issues. So just mine.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll just say that I provided a lot of comments just written to staff. So I don't really have any other public comments on the draft EIR. Staff has already taken those on and I expect to see those in the report.
Thank you. Same goes for me. Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I saw a couple of edits. I guess my first one is that the West County Trail is not to the east. And I think, I didn't look at all the others. I hope that you are. I also noticed that Page ES-7, Impact AQ-2, the mitigation says none required, but the residual impact is less than significant with mitigation. So I think that needed, needs to be fixed.
I'm sorry, Kathy, which?
ES-7, Impact AQ-2.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's one that I noticed. I guess there might have been some others. I think there's a typo on 4.13-11, which is Page 265. I think they said onsite. I think they mean on site. And they are referring to the New Hawk Crossing, not the signal at Mill Station. Is that true? It was unclear to me. And in that, I think it's on that same page. They were mentioning that the property owner, which is the school to the north, doesn't want a sidewalk extending from the project to the West County Trail. And I just cannot believe that. I really think that they need a sidewalk there because people are going to walk there. There's no way to avoid that. And furthermore, the county allowed them to put their driveway over the public trail. And I don't see how they cannot want people to get to the public trail and not use the improvements that they've made. And I think a sidewalk should go there. And I think that's the only way to mitigate a pedestrian problem in that area. Just unbelievable, actually.
I'm sorry, Kathy, can you say, what page is that on?
I think it's on 265 when they were discussing the Hawk. And I wasn't sure because the New Hawk, is the New Hawk Crossing at Mill Station or is it?
So the New Hawk is at Danmar.
Danmar.
The Mill Station intersection was, and the signal was put in when the school went in. So that, I mean, the intersection was there, but it was rearranged.
Actual Hawk or is it a?
That's an actual signal light.
Okay, signal light with a walk. Okay. And I thought it did already exist, so we talked about new. I think the problem is that if you're walking almost from any one of those houses to go north, that's where people are going to walk. And I don't see why the project sidewalk shouldn't be required to extend to the schools amenities that are already there. Because if it isn't, then I think it's a very dangerous situation for people.
So I'm clear, because this is sort of the in-plan notice. So I do have the plan up. And I'll just zoom in a little bit on that north side. So are you?
Yeah.
Are you saying the connection between the, so there's, there's a couple of things. One, just, so there's currently a trail through, right on the top of the screen. There's currently a trail into the O'Reilly property. It sort of goes around this existing field area that is actually going to be maintained and have connection to all of the residences. But is what you're saying that there should, that there needs to be something down in this area?
Yes, I'm hearing the, there's a statement in this document, sorry, I think it's on Page 2, to see if I'm not sure, where they state that they aren't putting a sidewalk to connect to that roadway and existing infrastructure that crosses the public trail.
In this area? Correct. Yeah.
In the area of the crossing of the West County Trail. That they're specifically not putting one in, which means that the people from this development and others from Hurlebut who are walking through on that passageway and using this as a public sidewalk are denied safe access to.
There is currently a sidewalk though from here over to the trail. I know because I have parked in the O'Reilly Walk and walked my dog over there onto the trail. So there is already a sidewalk.
Along the O'Reilly property. Is that what you're saying? Because I can't really see it here in this drawing.
Yeah, there is already a sidewalk that goes from the trail up this, oh, and actually you can kind of, you can almost see it on the screen. It's underneath the black line, but right to the north, there's a white. There is a sidewalk already.
To the crosswalk, but I don't see it extending all the way to where your arrow is now.
It does. Yeah.
It does. Okay. Okay, good. That's what I was concerned about.
Walked on it many times. Yep.
They didn't want people to access the trail that way. Excuse me?
Yeah, and then just to clarify, because we did get this, and John had talked about this in his report. The other, for the sort of central part of the property, the other, and then obviously on the south side, there's, you know, on the very south side, there is both a trail and a new curb cut for vehicles. The other component, which was a mitigation, which isn't on this plan because it is something that EIR is recommending in terms of pedestrian, is a, somewhere in this area that there be a kind of more centralized pathway. You know, you can actually walk right now along the top of the screen space and then down. I think you can actually go all the way down to the buildings and through the central, the central big entryway between O'Reilly.
Right.
So there was a, the mitigation that John talked about earlier of going through that central space. Turns out O'Reilly uses that for a lot of stuff, so they would be blocking it a lot. So what, and what we're proposing instead, which is still a mitigation because it's in the center part of the lot, is that it just be on the south side of this building. So like this sidewalk here and then connect through. And so that is, that's the change, that mitigation that will show up in the draft, in the final EIR. But just wanted to bring that up while we're talking about pedestrian stuff.
Okay. Additionally, I agree with the fire evacuations. And while I'm very pleased that there is a pedestrian trail to the east that goes to Hurlebut Avenue, so neighbors can walk in this area if they want to get off the highways or the rural roads with no sidewalks. But I think that that should be a fire-safe exit as well. I don't think it's safe enough without that. It could be opened up in case of emergency or bollards taken out. I agree with the problem of exiting those two driveways, or actually three, now that the new one's coming in and all the cars turning out onto the highway left and right from that position. Is there, you know, we can look at the final drawings and see where their left turn lanes.
Yeah, and I can tell you, our, Steve from W-Trans, our traffic consultant for the project, who is actually just hired by the city to do the work on this. He is here tonight, so he's listening to your comments. That's all.
And regarding the traffic, I do not understand why the main 116 and 12 intersection is not part of the study. It looks like fewer cars are going from High School Road and 116 toward Bodega Avenue. But I think there will be significant numbers. And I think it's just important to realize the impact that that intersection already has. I don't understand why it wasn't included, unless the number is completely dwindled, but that's hard to believe. And regarding the impacts at Occidental and 116, I was surprised to see those impacts being as great as they are. I guess I haven't been there very often during rush hour. Will Caltrans be able to, will the county be able to make improvements at that intersection ahead of the project being built? I didn't actually read all the mitigations. Is that included? I think something should be stated, excuse me, stated about that. Because there must be an awful lot of other projects anticipated in the West County that will be coming through that intersection over the next few years. So I think it's real important to look at the safety there as well as the traffic impact and slowdowns. And where did my notes go? So I, I think the inclusion of that traffic study, uh, Main Street and the fire safety of getting out of the property and the left turns, um, I, did I miss them in the traffic study? The, the left, projected left turns coming out of the project from those driveways? I know they looked, looking at intersections. Was that also there? And I just didn't catch that.
Should be there. Yeah. Yeah. Um, just, and just in terms of fire access, I know vehicle access to Hurlbut is, um, something that was very much not wanted.
Yeah.
Uh, by the neighbors, both for this project and for the Turner School. And I know the applicant had heard that and, uh, wouldn't have designed a project without that access. Um, we did propose, uh, suggest to them actually that they propose and see what the, what the neighbors thought, as well as the commission, a pedestrian bicycle path to get there. Because if you're living in the eastern buildings, to be able to get to the trail or on East Hurlbut, uh, it's, you know, to have a pedestrian gate so you can, as a resident, go out and catch the trail on that side instead of having to walk all the way to the north side to catch the trail to, to go. Um, so that is included. Um, in terms of the fire access for fire vehicles, um, we did do a careful review, actually, um, after the preliminary review and as part of their initial smittle with the fire department. Uh, and what they noted in terms of their fire access for safety, and I realize you're talking about evacuation, which is a little bit different, um, is that they would never use East Hurlbut to fight a fire or for emergency anyway, just because as pretty much everyone here knows, it's a one and a quarter lane road is how I describe it. It's, it's, you know, without this curb gutter sidewalk and then two cars go by, you have to be careful as you're passing because it's a narrow road. And so it's, uh, it's not something our fire department would use unless they're doing actual mutual aid to someone on Hurlbut, but they wouldn't be using access for this property. Um, so the access that's worked out here is what the fire department is requiring for their access.
Okay. So they're not treating that like a cul-de-sac that doesn't?
Yeah, they're, yeah. So it's a sort of, it's a loop road and they can get around the whole thing through the, on the site, on the site. That's what they will be constructing. Yeah.
And just for clarification, you talked about residents going out to Hurlbut. Hurlbut neighbors can also walk in, or is that locked? The gate that's provided?
So that would be a question for the applicant, but I know you can walk through the rest of the property just from the trail on the north side. So I don't.
Yeah, but we're talking about a community and pedestrian access.
So that's probably something that to be held for the entitlement review. That's, yeah.
It was nice to see it there at least. And that's all.
Okay. Um, let's see. Uh, first of all, appreciate both you guys, all the questions and stuff. The detail really helped, um, to kind of flush some of that stuff out. Um, besides, I meant to look at, look this up. So the, uh, there's a, I know that there's a crossing, um, is that Mill Station and one sixteen, right, where the cars come out? When's the next, what's the next crossing, pedestrian crossing after that? Is it, is it all the way down the, uh, Hurlbut or is it?
Yeah. So let me pull up that map again, just to clarify, because I think that, um, actually, what I do is also, I'm going to pull up the aerial because it's got a little bit more context. And then I'll share my screen. Okay. So, um, I'll just zoom out a little bit. So yeah, so the, this is the Hurl, uh, the Highway one sixteen and Mill Station. So there is the light and the crossing there. And right now, there is not anything until East Hurlbut down here, uh, where it, or Hurlbut Avenue, sorry, not East Hurlbut, where it meets one sixteen. However, Caltrans is putting in right now a crosswalk at Danmar. And so that is, um, if you zoom in, obviously it's, it's right at the main entry to the O'Reilly area. And that's where we want to make sure there's, yeah, the sidewalks that go through.
Okay. Um, the other impact is the, uh, West County Trail that crosses East Hurlbut. That's, you have to be real careful there crossing, uh, as a pedestrian or a bike. And I think that's, it's not really, I guess, taken into consideration what that impact's going to be. I mean, you almost need like a crossing light there just about, uh, cars coming through there. And it's kind of a blind spot, too, from that standpoint. And you've got cars coming in from Hurlbut and then down East Hurlbut.
Correct. There's traffic on that. Um, this has been referred to West County, uh, sorry, regional parks, um, and, and they are aware of the connection on the site, but obviously also, uh, potential for any impacts here. Um, this is a, just like all of the West County Trails within the city limits, um, signed with, you know, the pedestrian has to stop. Um, I think I will say, having used this crosswalk, because this is how I backroads bicycle up to Ace and Pacific from my house, um, you definitely ask a pedestrian or bicyclist, stop here to look for traffic because there's a little bit more than, some of the dead end streets, certainly not more than the, over by the high school. Um, so, you know, it is, it's rules of the road kind of a thing.
Yeah.
But yeah, again, we did refer this to regional parks.
And I know that it takes into consideration the surrounding area, but, um, for example, the effect it's going to have with the other project, uh, off of Bodega Avenue that has another eighty units. So, and that's just looked at, that, that surrounding area. So then you take those vehicles, these vehicles, and you add them all into the downtown area, which is in consideration. So if you do that addition, it's, it's pretty, going to be pretty hectic. Um, I'm always, uh, kind of confused or baffled, uh, oftentimes that when these projects come up and you look at what the general plan says, especially after we did a bunch of work on the general plan, and the comments here were absolutely right on target, that this does not fit into the character, you know, a lot of that stuff that's usually just kind of like, oh yeah, it doesn't. So we're, we're still going to move on with it. Um, and I don't know, I know that that's EIR. I think there's some comments there about the general plan, but I don't know how specific they address it to say, okay, this doesn't conform, that does. Um, also, um, you know, I appreciate all the formulas that they use for their impact and mitigation, you know, but is it really going to reduce traffic because they've opened up some pedestrian walkways, maybe during the summer might, but not during the winter? And I'd be curious to go back through some of these EIRs that have been done after the fact to see just how accurate they were on their, uh, you know, their thoughts on that. Um, so I, yeah, I have a lot of, a lot of concerns, uh, with this from different impacts, uh, the heights, the displacement of water or use of water, et cetera. So, um, but I think a lot of it has been addressed or looked at or on here. So.
Right. And just one note, Chair, the, um, in terms of the traffic, there is a, a, the W Trans, our consultant is aware of those other projects, and we did have a conversation about that. Um, the section of the EIR, the, um, there is a cumulative impacts, and that is what that section is about. It's like, you can't, you know, the one project of a hundred, you can't make them do every single improvement. That's why we collect traffic impact fees and we have a master plan with those, with what those improvements would be, which we do, uh, as does the county. Um, but we also do need to look at, okay, here's all of the other projects in the pipeline or that are approved that we know are happening. And you have to look at those cumulatively, too. That's what that last section is, is the cumulative impact section.
Okay. And, you know, I do believe, um, you know, people coming to this, um, you're not going to come down Highway twelve, you're going to come down Occidental, uh, maybe High School and then take Hurlbut possibly to get to that location or continue down Occidental and then, uh, go left on one sixteen coming in that way. So, which is, again, it's just a long line of, of cars there. I don't know what's, um, you know, it's just going to be added to it. But, um, anyway.
Can you use your microphone?
Yeah.
From the hearing impaired person right now can hear me. I'm, I'm really confused too, because are we looking at the impact of traffic during different hours of the day? Because you're telling me that we're putting in a bike path or that, I mean, that's all fantastic, but people can't bike to work. People can't, you know, drive their children to school on a bicycle. So while it might mitigate some of the traffic for some things, it just isn't practical for grocery stores, commuting, working, going to downtown. So I just don't know if we really, I, I mean, I, I couldn't see in there real definitive. We're looking at all this traffic from all these projects and how we're going to deal with this massive congestion and broken down specifically for hours of the day, how many cars we anticipate commuting, where we anticipate them commuting. And, you know, this is going to also migrate into that other project because people do commute to Santa Rosa. So they're going to go down Highway one sixteen, then they're going to be through town. Um, I'm just, yeah, I, I didn't. Right. And I do want to remind the commission, because I know we're actually, and we'll actually have a meeting at our, I think our next meeting, um, we'll be talking about vehicle mile traveled. So I just do want to remind you, we used to use level of service, which is a measure of congestion, as a sequoia impact. That is no longer, per our general plan and state law, a way to analyze sequoia. What we are looking at is vehicle miles traveled per resident. So that is the measure that we use. Um, we still do do, and I, I agree, it's probably a little confusing in the, because we do a traffic study that does look at the congestion of particular intersections. And that is so we can better understand, is it, is there a safety issue with a particular intersection and make sure it's all functional? You know, we did that with Wood Marcus Well with their, uh, you know, two driveways into the project, that kind of, and the adjacent intersections. Um, but just in terms of sequoia, the, how many vehicle miles traveled for the residential, for this development, that is the metric, not is the road going to be more congested? And I realize that's, and, and we will be, like I said, our next planning commission meeting will actually be reviewing that. So you'll, that'll be kind of fresh in your head, um, before this project comes back to you.
Yeah, that's, um, yeah, vehicle miles travel is great, but looking at all the timing and stuff, I think is also crucial. So, all right. Um, I don't know if there's any other... Yeah, go ahead.
I have two more thoughts.
Yeah, sure.
Sorry. And one of them is that in the way that this neighborhood is consistent with our general plan, is it, is adjacent to bus lines, shopping, and a highway. It's not done along the street somewhere in the country. And it focuses this urban growth where it is closer and does reduce traffic because these people will drive less than if they were in another location that was farther from those amenities. That's a small detail, but it is also, does make it consistent with our general plan in that respect. There are a lot of projects around town that I've seen over the last forty-one or two years where neighbors over the fence had the same concern about the height of a building. And many projects, if you look around this town, you will see that the backsides of those properties have their homes shedded. The roof is designed in such a way that it looks lower and it makes it feel more consistent with the adjacent buildings. And that is one way to, to mitigate the juxtaposition of this next to what is now currently a rural property. I know because it was done on many other projects, it could be done on this one. And in fact, the reason the roof line of the O'Reilly project is slanted in the way it is, is for this very same reason. They wanted to feel like it's set into the property and didn't stand out. I wanted it up against the street and three stories tall with housing on top, but they didn't do that. But what they did is, is rather nice, and it could be repurposed for housing someday as well. Um, so that would, would be the comment I would make to mitigate the public's concern over the juxtaposition of its urban properties next to the rural properties. I also think that the trees will go a long way to do that. And I respect how they have created sort of a parklet feeling to the project by putting in those trees.
Okay. Thank you. Do you get information that's needed? Anything else from us?
Yeah, I would say we got, um, a good amount. Commissioner Roger, I would, um, appreciate your notes. If you could send that copy.
If you're willing to send me your notes.
Yeah, there was.
No, no, your other ones.
Correct. Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
But yes, Chair Fernandez, this is, um, really helpful information from both the public as well as the, the commission. And I want to thank you all for your time and diligence reviewing this. Yes.
Okay. All right. Um, let's move on to item seven, subcommittee updates. There any?
Okay. And so, yeah, so the item, we can just wait maybe a minute. The folks, we're, we're not offended if people leave our meeting early. Don't worry. We understand. It's, everyone's busy.
That's okay. Yeah.
And I'll just note for the public record that Commissioner Burns did need to step out about five minutes ago. So. But we do still have a quorum and, uh, sorry, I'll stop sharing my screen. Go ahead, Chair Fernandez.
Okay. Um, let's see. Uh, subcommittee reports, um, there is another meeting coming up for the Friends of Ives Park. I'll show that date with you. Um, I believe it's the, you know, we, I can't look on my phone because I'm using that for video. So I'll let you know what that is. But I think it's like a, in about a week. It's still in January, though, at the Vets Building. Okay. So, uh, that's it, I think, for subcommittee reports, unless anybody else has anything. And go on to Planning Director's Report.
Okay. Um, so Planning Director Report, the, uh, item eight A, first I wanted to cover updates on the Planning Commission work plan. Um, this was adopted by council at their December nineteenth meeting. Um, and, uh, it was adopted as is. However, they did request, I know, if you recall, we had a line item for potential review of other housing element implementations, starting to kind of prioritize those and get some direction. Um, they did ask to, uh, have a discussion with that. And so I am working with the chair and Assistant City Manager Mary Gorley to try to schedule a joint meeting. So it would be at the time of a planning commission meeting, but have the city council join, uh, so we can have an, uh, open discussion. Some of the items they were requesting, uh, off the top of my head, I don't have my notes with me, but the, um, the legal aid, some of the tenant protections and what might make sense to do for that. That was Vice Mayor Zolman. Um, the vacation rental policy and where and how, how that should fit in, but also, you know, obviously we have three new counselors. So, uh, what their, uh, council members and what their thoughts might be or evolving thoughts might be on that. Um, and there were a couple others, I think tiny homes, uh, which came up both here and at the Planning Commission meeting. Um, so we are working on, on scheduling that. And, um, I would say if you have other items that you think would be good for a joint meeting sort of within that topic, uh, you can get them to either Chair Fernandez, because I'll be working with him on that agenda, or directly to John and me. So. Any questions on the work plan update? It was important enough, I put it on the agenda, make sure I didn't forget to update you all on the status of that. Uh, other updates, which are also important, um, at their last, uh, council meeting, the city council did approve, uh, reappointment of both Chair Fernandez and, uh, Commissioner Hanley. So, uh, and I realize we may not have sent out emails congratulating you because they decided, you know, we have two great commissioners, two, they reapply, let's just consent item, reappoint them. So, um, that is, congratulations. And we'll work with you on, um, Susie is already updating the update, uh, the website with the new, um, uh, new term dates, which will be four years from now. So, and thank you again for your service.
Wait, four years? Wait, four years?
Just be glad you don't have to caucus and do primaries. And then they will be doing interviews for the SCA Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory, Citizen Advisory Position, we have three applicants for that. They'll be doing that at the next council meeting, as well as the, and I think there was one new person who, I believe was actually on this meeting tonight, too, who applied for the Climate Action Committee, and then they actually are not wanting to re-interview the existing members, similar to the Planning Commission, so that'll also be on their agenda at the next meeting. We'll also have an update and the quarterly report for the Horizon Shine Temporary Use Permit, as well as the Homeless Housing Liaison Report at the next council meeting, and that is February 6th. And then, as, as per normal, the Horizon Shine would also then come to the, your next Planning Commission meeting. I think, so we've got a lot of, I know, I looked at, we had like seven items for, seven items for the next council meeting, but I think that's all of them. There is, oh, there is also a project amendment for the AmeriCorps Trail Budget Amendment going to them as well. And that would be out of park funds, not general fund, but that will be going to them.
And then we get a, at some point, a new liaison list?
Thank you. I, I have been remiss in that, yes. I will probably have Susie do it, because she is free at that kind of stuff, so. I don't foresee a liaison at the next council meeting, for any reason, but the, obviously, when the Canopy Project goes to them, they would, we would need one for that. That's probably the next, that and the VMT, which are probably in April, or probably the next time we'll need a liaison, so. And then as, is that it for meeting stuff? Okay. And then, thank you, yeah, a lot of meeting stuff, hard to keep track of. And then, as you did see, I am resigning my position at the city. I'm going to be relocating. It's bittersweet, I get to spend more time with family, so, you know, that's the nice part of it, but leaving Sebastopol will certainly be hard, and I'll miss you all, so. And I will be here-
Terrible news.
-through the end of February, so, you know, we'll see each other a few more times.
Okay, good. Yeah, our loss, but hopefully your gain with family, so.
Oh, yes, thank you. John had one more?
Yeah, there's one last one, so we got in the final submissions for the Sustainable Transportation Grant, which looks at the downtown, kind of reconfiguration and traffic and stuff like that. So we will be reviewing the three proposals that we received, and then work on selecting a, one of those proposals, and get working on that as soon as possible, so. Just wanted to update the commission on that part. The other thing is, I did get some emails from the SCA and Fair and Peers folks who are working on the Active Transportation Plan for the county. They are in their kind of, they've finished the data collection part earlier on from the winter, and are compiling all that data, and then should be providing another update to our Planning Commission in the spring of this year, with project proposals and such like that, for our, update to our Active Transportation Plan. So look for that in the future as well.
Okay, questions? Planning Department? Go ahead.
I have to ask, is Ives Park pathway improvement stuck in the mud? I still see the fencing up.
Stuck in the mud. Well, the notice of completion of the first part is going to council next Tuesday, I didn't mention that, it's just the formal closeout of it for our capital improvement project. I need that, because it means we can get almost $100,000 from the state, so, you know, grant reimbursement, since we did have grant funding for that. We did apply for a regional trail grant at the, from the state as well, we have not yet heard about that grant, so.
Yes, all right.
And we do have someone on Zoom with their hand raised, I don't know if they are trying to comment on my report. Probably not, but it is, but it is an agenda item, and so if there's a public comment-
I can open it for public comment, and if you want to recognize Jacob.
Okay, Jacob, and so this is for public comment on the Planning Director Report. Go ahead.
Yes, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Just, you know, I was at the meeting earlier, and at that point, I understood that it was the last day to respond to the EIR, so I went home and, and scanned through it, and I had some comments. I don't know if I can do that still, though.
So not in this meeting, but you can email them to John J., his email is jjay@cityofsebastopol.gov.
Is that on the, the postcard that you guys sent?
Yes.
Okay, I got that.
Yep.
Okay, so it's not too late to submit, then, is what you're saying?
Yep, go ahead, write them up, send them in, thank you.
But it has to be, it has to be today, or tonight.
Yeah, I think in this meeting, we said it there, tomorrow, but it would be great to have them today, if you could, Jacob, thank you.
I will, I will, thank you.
Perfect, thanks.
Bye.
Okay, then I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all.
Recording stopped.